Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I want to welcome everyone today. Often before our council meetings, we have some time to recognize important issues or people in our community, and today we have several of those, beginning with a bittersweet moment which is recognizing our Regulatory Services Director, Noah Schuckman. So please come on up as he leaves us for a really important and exciting new job in Duluth. I keep telling Noah that the city of Duluth is underwater, and he's making a terrible choice, but he doesn't agree with me. But no, we're so excited for you, Noah. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Goodman, who chairs the EDRS Committee and who has worked with Noah for many, many years during his time at the city.
Well, thank you, Council President Bender. Noah, I have lots of things to say. I usually am known for crying, so I'm going to try really hard not to cry. Noah and I have worked together for the better part of 15 years. He started out, as many of you know, working for Councilmember Schiff, but working with Councilmember Schiff meant working with all of the other council members, too. You really brought a lot of light and direction, along with Heidi Ritchie, to Councilmember Schiff's work and his office, and we all loved working with you in that capacity. It was no surprise when you left that you would move into the administration and do great things, and that's what's again happening for you in your career. One of the things that binds me the closest to Noah is the most important thing in my life is my dog Sadie. And my dog Sadie and his now-deceased dog Wilco were siblings. And so we got our dogs at the same place because we knew each other from City Hall. And so I'm thinking about your love of animals and the incredible work that you did at Animal Control, which in and of itself is a very difficult place to be managing. And so from the bottom of my heart, Noah, I am really sorry to see you leave and excited to get to know someone in Duluth. So we'll get to come up. I hear great things are happening in Duluth, and that's a good connection for all of us to know we can go up there and get a tour of the city and hear from Noah. So this is a resolution written by the Mayor's Office, as well as a number of other people because so many people know and love Noah, honoring Noah Schuckman for his years of service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Noah celebrated 15 years of full-time service to the city and the people of Minneapolis on October 27, 2018, and during his tenure served as interim intern with the Minneapolis Community Development Agency, Senior Policy Aid, Project Coordinator, Executive Secretary to the City Coordinator, Regulatory Services Interagency Coordinator, Director of Operations and Business Improvement, and currently Director of Regulatory Services. We should have known you were maybe thinking about leaving when we had this long list of places you've been. Mr. Schuckman's legacy and his overriding commitment to the public and employee good, balancing enforcement and education to adapt, make progress on critical issues, and whereas through the aforementioned positions and commitment, Noah established trust, credibility, and positive collaborative working relationships with 33 council members, three mayors, and countless colleagues. And whereas Noah provided thoughtful and impactful leadership and regulatory services on issues related to regulation, organizational development, finance, program implementation, and policy development, and strategic planning and performance monitoring. And whereas Noah's steadfast and progressive leadership in employee engagement, organizational development, multiple reorganizations, and department culture has provided Reg Services with both a true north and the ability to move forward as a unified department. Right, guys? And whereas Noah's accomplishments combine vision with strategic know-how through policy and process development, including Minneapolis's Clean Indoor Air Ordinance, graffiti abatement, chairing the Nuisance Conditions Process Review Panel to improve vacant and boarded properties throughout the city. And whereas Minneapolis has benefited from Noah's leadership and insights during major events, both planned and catastrophic, including the Super Bowl, the I-35 Bridge collapse, and the North Minneapolis tornado in 2011. And whereas many city staff, both within and outside of Reg Services, have benefited from Mr. Schuckman's passion for formal and informal mentorship, staff development, and advocacy, including Reg Services Career Pathways, Staff Development Program, his participation in team lead by Human Resources to develop the city's innovative leadership development program, Leadership U, and sponsorship of a citywide customer service initiative. And whereas all of these accomplishments are eclipsed only by the love of family, the commitment to the city staff, delight in office pranks, and ridiculously poor taste in soccer teams. And whereas Noah is well-known and respected for his truthfulness, pragmatism, and ability to get things done, whereas Mr. Schuckman will deeply be missed by the city's elected officials, department heads, city staff, reformed council aid society, and former members of Reg Services as a leader, colleague, compatriot, and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Minneapolis, the mayor, and the city council commend Noah for his dedication and exemplary service to the city and express their deep gratitude and appreciation for him and his outstanding commitment to the city. Be it further resolved, the mayor and city council congratulate you, Noah, for your many significant accomplishments and wish you much happiness and fulfillment in your next adventure.
Before we turn it over to Noah, I just wanted to add one thing, which is, I don't think we have ever sat down and talked about anything without first talking about our kids and our family. And I just want to thank your family, because we all do this work in public service because we love our community so much. And I'm emotional because it's really a sacrifice for the whole family. So I just want to thank you, all your kids and your partner, for supporting you, because you've given us so much as a community by the weekend phone calls and the running out the door to get to a meeting at the last minute. It's all really apparent, and we know that's a big sacrifice that we all make. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, on that note, I'll start by thanking my wife Heidi, and my son Charlie, and my daughter Eliza, as well as my parents who are here. So thank you all for that. I think I would be remiss to not note that my mother was a city employee and a longtime public servant, and so certainly I have some of that that has carried through to my career. I wanted to thank both of you, Council President and Councilmember, for this. It's very appreciated. Councilmembers, thank you for having me today. I appreciate this. And Mayor, thank you for the appointment and the trust in running Regulatory Services. It's been an honor. I also want to thank both former Mayor Hodges and Councilmember Schiff for their trust in my work in their offices and in Regulatory Services. And more than anything, I want to thank the department's leadership team, many of whom are here, and Regulatory Services staff. And I continued to be, throughout my time in the department, 10 years, I continued to be inspired by their work and their commitment to the people of Minneapolis and the people who visit the city, as well as all city staff who do that every day. And so thank you all for that and for this. I will miss working with all of you, and it's been an honor to serve the city. Thank you.
So now we have Councilmember Gordon coming, and our second resolution is commemorating the Armistice Day Centennial, and we'll invite our guests up as well to join us if you'd And I will turn this over to Councilmember Gordon for this very unfortunately timely, I think, reminder.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. If some folks want to come to this side, you can do that, too, because I know we have a group of veterans here who are joining for this event. This is coming up later in the month, on November 11th, is the 100th anniversary of the armistice after World War I. And so we thought it was appropriate for us to pass a resolution and commemorate this day. It's significant for those who were there, they thought of that as the day to end all war. Unfortunately, that wasn't what happened, but at that point it was celebrated greatly. And actually, my parents were Canadian, and it was called Remembrance Day in my house when I was growing up, and it was very significant there to remember that day as the armistice, but also all the people who suffered in World War I. So commemorating the Armistice Day Centennial. Whereas at the 11th hour of November 11, 1918, all combat operations in the fields of Europe ceased, ending the First World War. And whereas November 11, 2018, will mark the 100th anniversary of that armistice, and the First World War was at that time the deadliest and most destructive human conflict that had ever occurred, killing more than 20 million men and women and wounding over 21 million more. And whereas the First World War tragically did not end all wars, with more than 172 million people having died in war in the century since the armistice. And whereas the original intent of Armistice Day was to be the day of remembrance of the millions who lost their lives and not an opportunity to glorify war. And whereas there will be a 100th anniversary World War I Remembrance Event on November 11, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. at the Flagpole Plaza at 45th Avenue North and Victoria Memorial Drive, sponsored by the city of Minneapolis, Hennington County, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, and the city of Robinsdale. And whereas Veterans for Peace and the Landmark Center have organized a reclaim Armistice Day celebration on November 11, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at 75 Fifth Street West, St. Paul. And whereas an Armistice Centennial commemoration will be held at Brits Pub on November 11, 2018, starting at 4:00 p.m. That's at 1110 Nicollet Mall, Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the Centennial of Armistice Day, support peace in all forms for all people, and hold out hope that the spirit of Armistice Day will motivate all people and all leaders throughout the world to work for peace and prevent war. And now I would like to let Dave say a few words, and we're going to commemorate it with the ringing of the bell.
Yes, we brought our bells with us, as we normally do. When we ring our bells on Armistice Day, we've been doing this for over 20 years. We're a small group. We're veterans that are very, very literate and very active and passionate group of veterans that believe that we need to change the paradigm of war to a paradigm of peace. And we do that with ringing bells at various occasions. Memorial Day, when a passing with one of our members or a member of the pacifist community. We rang our bells down in Mankato a couple weeks ago, down at the site of the mass execution of Native Americans in Mankato. We rang the bell 38 times for each of the people that were hung that day. And so we ring our bells whenever we have an opportunity to do so, including here. Some of our bells have been made, are handmade by some of our members, others are just bells that we collected along the way. But we ring these bells in a solemn recognition of the horrors of war, so that people will reflect on that, and instead of the first response to things, to send missiles and guns, to change that paradigm. And that one day, it won't be Veterans Day anymore, but it'll be Armistice Day, and bring it back to that same wonderful moment that happened when cessation of combat in World War I, and silence was on the battlefield, soldiers laid their weapons down, embraced in no man's land, and went home, and the celebration of peace began. In recognition of that, we will now ring our bells.
Thank you again to everyone who's come here today. Before we begin and call our meeting to order, I want to recognize Councilmember Fletcher for one final moment here to recognize the victims this week that we've seen across the country who have been victims of domestic terrorism, racial violence, and religious violence and persecution.
Thank you, President Bender. Since the last time this council convened, our nation has experienced tragic, terrifying loss of life in violent events rooted in antisemitism and racism. There will be a more appropriate time for a political response to address the hateful rhetoric and dog whistle politics from elected leaders that are empowering white supremacists, and to ask why these murderers had such easy access to guns. One especially appropriate time is coming up on Tuesday, November 6, when we go to the polls. Today, though, the Minneapolis City Council, joined by our mayor, asks you to join us in a moment of reflection as we express our profound grief and steadfast solidarity with the cities and the people who have been targeted in these attacks. On October 24, an armed man entered a grocery store in Jefferson Town, Kentucky, and murdered two people in a racially motivated shooting. He had first unsuccessfully attempted to enter First Baptist Church, a predominantly black church nearby. Then on October 27, a man with an AR-15 opened fire in Eight's Chaim synagogue in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in an explicitly antisemitic attack on a community in the midst of Shabbat prayers, killing 11 people and wounding six more. We will read the names of the victims of these murders, followed by a moment of silence. We mourn the victims of last week's racially motivated shooting in Kentucky.
Vicki Jones.
Maurice Stollard.
And we mourn the victims of the antisemitic mass shooting at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh.
Joyce Feinberg.
Richard Godfrey.
Rose Mallinger.
Jerry Rubinwitz.
Cecil Rosenthal.
David Rosenthal.
Bernice Simon.
Sylvan Simon.
Daniel Stein.
Melvin Wax.
Irving Younger.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to Councilmember Fletcher for your leadership in this painful moment, and thank you to the mayor for joining us. So again, I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I will call to order a regular meeting of the city council for November 2, 2018, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
President.
Cunningham.
President.
Ellison.
President.
Goodman.
President.
Johnson.
President.
Palmasano.
President.
Gordon.
Here.
Conom.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. The agenda for today's meeting is before us, and the first item is adoption of our agenda. I'll see if there are any amendments from council members to the agenda. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Aye.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion to make those referrals?
So moved.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is the reports from our standing committees. The first report is from our Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. The Regulatory Services and Economic Development Committee is bringing forward 15 items for approval this morning. Item number one, our liquor license, and it's a change in our liquor licensing allowable entertainment ordinance. Item two is anticipation of a potential change in the charter regarding off-sale liquor spacing requirements. Item three is a new business license. Item four is advance notice, which I will pull for discussion. Item five is our conduct on premise ordinance, a fairly major change in a big body of work. Item number six, our liquor license approvals. Seven, our liquor license renewals. Item number eight is business license renewals. Nine is gambling license approvals. And 10 are gambling license renewals. 11 is a license settlement conference. 12 is a refinancing of some revenue notes. Items 13, 14, and 15 are rental license reinstatements. With that, Madam President, I move items 1 through 3 and 5 through 15 for approval.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the EDRS committee agenda 1 through 3 and items 5 through 14, 15. I see some councilmembers ready to make comments. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a comment on item number two, and that's about the ordinance for spacing requirements that we put in place. I want to just give some context here, that back in 2014, the city began a coordinated effort to clean up some outdated language about alcohol regulations from our city charter. Some of you will recall this included eliminating the 70-30 and 60-40 rules. Since then, we've seen that the elimination of these prohibition-era rules didn't have any negative impacts on patrons or on neighbors. So with that in mind, I feel it's important to move forward with eliminating these outdated and burdensome restrictions from our city's constitution. Voters will get to make that decision next Tuesday, but the choices about treating liquor differently from wine and beer. So by requiring businesses to be located within seven contiguous acres of commercial zoning, we unfairly limit business models and limit access to only a small percentage to our overall city. So I do want to point out that the charter change that voters get to vote on next Tuesday really helps to increase the opportunities for existing and potential small business owners to plan for liquor as a part of their economic planning. It expands opportunities previously limited in places like North Minneapolis. It increases the profit margin potential for small businesses in our city. It removes a costly and counterintuitive process for getting an exemption through the Minnesota State Legislature to serve liquor in an establishment that wasn't in a commercial district of the right size. And it potentially saves businesses thousands of dollars that would need to be spent on lobbyists to help them navigate the state system to obtain an exemption. So our small business team is poised and ready to have updated and streamlined procedures. This measure, this item number two, helps us to have all of the ordinances in place to make this change seamless. So I hope this gives comfort to Minneapolitans as we head into Election Day on this specific initiative. It seems unusual that we have to do it this way through a referendum, but that was the opinion of our Charter Commission and the legal advice that they've received. So I especially appreciate the support on this from councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison, who are my co-authors here, as they see the opportunity that exists in this change in their neighborhoods as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
I wanted to thank Councilmember Palmasano for your leadership and just voice my support for the passage of this ordinance as well. I also wanted to commend and thank Councilmember Cunningham for his work on the conduct on premises ordinance, which has traditionally been an ordinance, I think, that has criminalized a lot of our neighbors, especially some of our most vulnerable neighbors who have been prone to interactions with the police. And I think that this rewrite is a good step in the right direction for us to not be criminalizing our neighbors and making sure that we're empowering both residents with the ability to stabilize themselves in place and in their home, but also an opportunity for landlords to not feel like they're forced to displace tenants, especially when we're looking at a housing market in which displacement is a huge problem, and many, many councilmembers are up here trying to solve this issue. And so I just wanted to thank Councilmember Cunningham for the heavy lift of rewriting the conduct on premises ordinance, and I'm happy to be a co-author on that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to speak to item number five, the conduct on license premises ordinance. I want to make sure I say thank you to the I Team. Jonathan and Elliot were co-project managers with my senior policy advisor, Sam Priestensen. So I just want to make sure I say thank you, because this was a very robust body of work. This is an example of the public health approach to public safety. So this isn't just amendment to an ordinance, this is also procedural change. This is also structural change with the MPD, with the Crime Prevention Specialist. There is, this is citywide. This was not merely just changing some words in an ordinance. We are very intentional about not only how we did this comprehensively, but that we also built in metrics and quality assurance, so that we make sure that the work, the outcomes that we are getting from this new system, this new ordinance, is actually what we are aiming for, which is to be able to connect folks who need the most resources, get them connected, by rather 911 being something that is criminalizing, but actually is an opportunity to connect folks to resources. And also, I think it's important to name that this is an ongoing, like while we're passing this today, this is an ongoing body of work. It's living. We're learning because we're at the front end of this work. There are at least 60 other cities that have ordinances like the conduct on license premises, and they have all disproportionately harmed poor black and brown folks. And so we are trying to figure out a way here to be able to address challenges while holding folks accountable, but also protecting the most vulnerable renters. And in this process, we have engaged dang near everybody that we could. We have lots of perspectives at the table with this, and as we move forward, we're going to be growing and developing our interdisciplinary review panel, which is going to be really the crux of the change. But we're going to be working on that moving forward, and so stay tuned. It's a living body of work. Like I said, we have the quality assurance in it that's going to help us make sure that we are continuously reviewing it, continuously making sure that we are producing high-quality work here at the city. So I just want to thank everybody who was involved with it. I get the accolades, but I want to make sure that I shine some light on the many, many people who were involved in this as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to comment briefly on this item number five, and really commend Councilmember Cunningham for this exemplary work from a first-term council member in the first year in office. This is an ordinance that is transformational for the most vulnerable renters in our city, and I think in part because it creates a new philosophy of how we're looking at rental housing in our city. It's part of a body of work that is shifting away from looking at rental properties as a problem to be solved in a neighborhood, and looking at our renters as valuable members of our community who are deserving of protection and support, and particularly those who are most vulnerable for displacement from their homes. And so Councilmember Cunningham's leadership has been really important in this one ordinance, but also in this overall movement toward balancing creating safety and stability in our neighborhoods with making sure that we're supporting the most vulnerable low-income renters in our city. And I think particularly the process that was used here was really creative, and the solutions, I think, really have a lot of buy-in from all the different partners who were involved. So excellent, excellent work. Is there any other discussion on these items on the EDRS committee? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conom.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items carry, which brings us back to EDRS item number four.
Thank you, Madam President. EDRS item number four has a substitute motion in front of you today. The reason why there's a substitute in front of everybody today is that we had a very fulsome public hearing during the last cycle and wanted to be able to take the comments of those who spoke for and against our advance notice initiative. We have made a number of changes. You can see they have been underlined in the draft in front of you. We took a number of things that the Home Line Coalition had suggested and just made some technical changes, as well as a couple of minor policy changes. So the ordinance is in front of you, and I move approval.
Councilmember Goodman has moved approval of item number four. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take this opportunity to thank my staff who's worked on this, as also former Councilmember Glidden, who started a lot of this work, and really take a moment to thank Councilmember Goodman for all of her work on this. It really has indeed been a pleasure to work with you on this. It really has indeed been a pleasure to work with you on this. It has been, this is something that came together. Be remiss to not thank the advocates as well as the landlord associations. This was hard work, and I believe we have something that will hopefully preserve or keep more affordable housing in affordable, and actually change the market and change how things operate here in Minneapolis. I'm very proud to be a part of a council, that that's the focus of how are we going to keep more housing kind of in the affordable range, and how do we create more? And I believe this will start to get us there. So with that, I hope to have your approval, and I'll stand for another questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
I never forget the day when I get the call from the residents that they had no idea that their building was for sale, and there's a notice that's posted that tells them that they have to be out within 30 days. And I will never forget the day that that happened in my ward to a building across the street from where I lived, where people were asked to leave on December 25th. Hopefully, this ordinance will protect tenants in a way that they will never have to come home to find out that their home is not their home anymore, and that they need to move in very short order to, into a marketplace where there are very few other options, and have the upheaval of having to change their whole life around with a very short period of time. This advance notice of sale is different than the ones that have been approved in the suburbs, because our advance notice of sale actually includes advance notice. So half of this ordinance suggests that when building owners are putting their building on the market and/or even talking to people about putting their building on the market, they notify the city as well as their tenants with a notification that we will provide in multiple languages to alert folks that their building might be for sale. That's the part of the ordinance that none of the other suburbs have implemented for a variety of reasons, but to me, there is no such thing as advance notice if there is no advance notice. The second portion of our language is a tenant protection piece. This tenant protection piece essentially says that for a three-month period after the sale, you cannot be evicted without cause, your rent cannot go up, and you should not be forced to leave for other conditions. This piece of the ordinance will also be notified to all tenants in multiple languages in the buildings after a sale. This would give tenants, in our mind, a minimum of five months, which is better than what we've seen happening up until now. It has been very difficult to get everybody to come together to figure out what we can do that will not raise the ire of those very good property owners who treat their tenants respectfully and don't want additional regulation, but at the same time, what we see from tenant advocates that we work with about how negatively some tenants have been treated in the sale process. So I'm really happy that we're bringing this forward today with an implementation date of early next year. I also want to just take an opportunity to thank Councilmember Glidden, who worked on this in her remaining five months since she left, but a really big thank you to Councilmember Schrader, who picked up where she left off and gave it 110% in terms of his thinking and previous experience to help make this ordinance balanced and fair, and something that will help tenants without insinuating that property owners are bad all of the time. Hopefully, this ordinance will make a change in the lives of people so that no one else on this dais will have to take that call from someone they know or don't know, someone they live near or live far from, who is calling our office because they will be out of their apartment in very short order due to nothing that they had to do with. I'm really excited about this work. I think it's extremely forward-thinking, and I would appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you. I put myself in queue to speak to this one as well, because frankly, I think this is the most important new protection for renters that this council has done in a long time, and it will make a huge difference in words like mine, which are majority renter. The city of Minneapolis is majority renter, and my ward has 80% of constituents who rent their homes. I too have gotten calls over the years of people who are, have gotten days of notice to decide if they want to stay in their home and pay double their rent or leave within a week or two. And these are seniors who've lived in their neighborhoods for decades, these are families with small children, in our schools, and it is incredibly disruptive. And there's only so much that we can do, even if we drop everything as councilmembers, and work together with organizations like HomeLine and Inculinus Unitus Borhtestisia and Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid, who have been tirelessly working to try to protect our renters. But our state laws are some of the worst in the country for people in the situation of facing eviction or being forced out of their home, and so I'm really appreciative of the leadership of councilmembers Glidden, and now Goodman and Schrader to bring this very, very important protection forward. We are seeing buildings being sold all across our city very, very quickly, and people have basically no notification that they're losing their homes. And I also just want to highlight too that, I mean, I think we hear a lot about the great work that's happening in the communities around us, but I'm really proud and thankful that our colleagues have brought us a stronger ordinance. It took a lot of, I think, negotiation and pushing and back and forth, but this is an ordinance that I think will have a lot of meaningful impact for renters across the city. I see Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to voice my support for this, and I wanted to emphasize one aspect in particular. In addition to the tenant protections, I think that advance notice will give us a hope of addressing one of the big problems we've been seeing lately, where we have affordable housing that's providing homes for people, and then it gets sold, and what happens is it then gets rehabbed lightly, the rents go way up, and we lose a block of affordable housing. If we have advance notice of the sale that will give people an opportunity to get involved in purchasing that, who might want to retain that affordability of that property, and I think that's very significant, and I'm hoping that this will be a first step where we can see how we can do a better job of preserving what we already have as what the so-called naturally occurring affordable housing, because someone will have an opportunity to purchase it and maintain the rents where they are, and potentially keep the same tenants there as well. So I think that's really promising, exciting to see this come forward. I think this has the potential to be a real game changer in terms of preventing displacement as well as just protecting the rights and being more respectful of renters.
Thank you. We hope this is a game changer. What really interested me is that, you know, we see these naturally occurring affordable housings flip, and it's just happening more and more frequently in all parts of the city. And the issue is that there just isn't a market response. There's really no way that the nonprofit or for-profit developers that care about affordable housing can take advantage of it and jump in. They just can't compete with the pace of the market. So you'll get this quick notice, and what we're hoping with the advance notice is that it just, I wouldn't, it's still not going to level the playing field, but it's going to make it a lot more fair than it is now.
Thank you. And then before calling the roll, I'll just add one last thing, which is I'm also really excited about some conversations that many of us are having about how to help get more legal protection for renters in the court system. So like many of our other protections that are either coming through or being contemplated, the enforcement mechanism is really in the courts, and we know that when renters have legal representation in the courts, they have much better outcomes. So a number of us are working together with partners from Hennepin County and in the foundation community to try to put together more resources for low-income renters to have the right to counsel when they are in courts. So with that, I'll see if anyone else has comments or thoughts, and I see none. I'll ask Clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report is from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. There's 10 items that the Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward. The first seven are land sales. The first four land sales are to the Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation of properties at 2418 Gerard Avenue North, 2543 Gerard Avenue North, 2635 Gerard Avenue North, and 3638 Gerard Avenue North. The fifth item is a land sale at 4901 Vincent Avenue North to Harvest Management Group. Sixth item is another land sale, that's at 81236th Avenue North to Jenny Investments LLC. And the last land sale is at 3257 Logan Avenue North to Quaint Investment LLC. And this is all sales for homes to be built there that will then be sold and lived in. The eighth item is approving appropriation of program income generated through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is income of $692,000. The ninth item is approving two grants out of our Emergency Solutions Grant Capital Funding Program. The first is to the Salvation Army's Harbor Light Center, and that's for $299,000. And the second is to a new pilot initiative to expand single adult case management capacity at the bridge, and this is for $99,000. The 10th and last item from the committee is passage of authorization for a new expanded Minneapolis 4D Affordable Housing Incentive Program based on our pilot. And I'd like to speak briefly on the 10th item, if I may.
Go ahead.
I just know that 4D might be meaningless to a lot of people, and this is actually, I think, a fairly significant and exciting thing that we're doing. We had a smaller pilot program that we tested out this year, and we saw as part of the pilot program qualified building owners who agreed to keep rents down to affordable levels, at least 20% of their units, down to an affordable level at people who are making 60% of area median income, and they received a 40% property tax reduction on those qualifying units. There were 270 units that participated. It went successfully, people wanted to do it, and we saw this as an opportunity to help landlords keep rents low, or at least reward those who might even be doing it anyway. With the new expanded program, we're moving it down so that it will cover rental property as low as two units, so a duplex, all the way up. People can apply for this program, and it will have the potential to preserve affordability. Estimates are between 700 and 1,500 units in 2019, and that's exciting, and we can get that 10-year commitment, and I think it benefits the landlords, of course, but also the tenants. So hopefully, we can push right up against that 1,500 number for next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to speak to item number 10.
Go ahead.
There is nothing better than having something you've worked on be so successful that it can be expanded. And I just want to take a moment to thank Andrea Brennan and Dean and her team for the incredible work that they did on a very timely basis. When we came in with the 4D pilot project, the state of Minnesota was only willing to give us a certain number of units that we would be able to test to see if it worked. Over 200 units were part of the test, and it worked extremely well, so much so that we had enough data to be able to make a determination as to how to expand it going forward, and right now is the time for property owners to pay attention. This really dovetails nicely with our advance notice regulations, because these are the buildings that could actually benefit from 4D. We get advance notice, it's an affordable building, a new affordable owner could come in and buy it, and then also apply for 4D, keeping the building more affordable and not feeling the need to flip it and increase the rents. And so part of what I think everyone here is working on is seeing how all of the different pieces of the puzzle fit together to make sure that we can do what we can from a regulatory point of view, not necessarily a money and building point of view, to ensure affordability in the city of Minneapolis. So I'm really excited. Often, you're here a long time, you never get to see the results of anything you've done. In this particular situation, the 4D program has been so positive and successful that all of us are getting to see something we voted on become successful and expanded. That is the gratifying work of helping renters in the city, as well as helping people keep their homes affordable.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually, for items one, two, three, and four, I would actually like to make a motion to send those four items back to committee for further discussion, because I have had a lot of folks from that neighborhood who are, who would like to reach out and connect with me more about that. They have some concerns, and so I would like to be able to have more conversation with the Chair and be able to talk a little bit more about these four land sales and what the outcomes will be for those, based on some of the concerns that I've heard from the community around affordability and accessibility. So I would like to make that motion.
I think what I will do then actually is pull items one through four off of the motion from Councilmember Goodman, and maybe ask that we take up items five through, I believe, 10, and then return back to items one through four. Perfect. Just since I see a number of councilmembers who I imagine are also want to speak about item 10. Okay, so back to then items five through 10. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to just briefly speak to item number 10, and this expansion actually represents, I think, a large step towards creating more equity for smaller property owners that rent to renters in our community, and so I'm really happy to support that. I also wanted to question item number nine, and that is the Emergency Services Grant that is being offered to, Emergency Solutions Grant to the Salvation Army Harbor Light Center. And I'm just wondering if there are opportunities to, to see some improvements in this, at this center that serves predominant number of communities of color, and the conditions outside of the Harbor Light Center are deplorable at best. And we are offering them this grant, and I'm wondering how are we holding them accountable for the services that they are providing, and if there's anybody that can answer that?
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. I know that the Chair was, I'm sorry, Chair Gordon is Chair of the HPD Committee. I don't know if you want to speak to that, or I can offer some thoughts.
Both potentially. There, in terms of the overall management and accountability, that wasn't a big discussion that we had at the committee. They definitely operate under the license and the purview of Hennepin County as one of the shelters, and I do go to the shelter coordinators' meetings and things are discussed. I will say that these improvements are to help, very much so with security, and they're to focus on how, what happens at the entryway and coming in and going out, and making some improvements that our staff, as well as the operators of the shelter, believe are really going to be important in terms of improving how things are operating there and making strides, and there were big needs. So we'll, I think, we'll have oversight, and we want to make sure that those capital improvements in the building are completed to the specifications and our expectations. I would say the city probably would have some role to play in terms of what individuals are doing outdoors, going to and from the shelter and walking around, so that would be something maybe to talk to the first precinct about, and outreach workers, and those kinds of things. That's really what you're getting at, because there might be more responsibility outside. And perhaps the Council President can add some more words of wisdom.
Thank you. Chair Gordon, Councilmember Jenkins, did you want to add to that? I mean, I can offer, from my perspective, having served on the Board of Heading Home Hennepin, which is our partnership with Hennepin County and other partners around serving people who are experiencing homelessness, and we have five operators of single adult shelter in the city of Minneapolis. They are all independently run but contracted, they contract with the county, the county contracts with them to provide that service. These two grants are part of our, as you can see under the item nine, our Emergency Solutions Grant Capital Funding. We actually had quite a bit of discussion in committee about the idea of spending this $99,000 amount on something that was not capital-related. So that was the majority of the discussion that we had, and we ended up being able to I think if there are concerns and questions about any particular operation of a shelter, that's certainly something we can take to that coalition and in conversations with the county and the operators directly.
Yeah, I would, I would support that. And it's, it's the comings and the goings and, and sort of behavior, but I think the behavior is sort of either contributed to or supported by the, the general appearance of the facility, which it appears that the, the management of Harbor Lights has no, seemingly no interest in, in maintaining the outward appearance of that facility. And so, yeah, I would support bringing that, these issues to that committee.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I just wanted to reflect briefly on how much things are coming to fruition today in a really exciting way. This is actually when our constituents ask, what is this council doing about affordable housing? We have, in multiple committees by multiple council members, almost, I think, a working majority of us, who have some sort of renter protection or some sort of ordinance in front of us today that stabilizes rent, that incentivizes landlords to maintain affordability, that prevents evictions. And I think this is a really good answer to something that the community's been asking us for, and it's evidence of a lot of good work going on behind the scenes. I'm really proud to be on the dais with all of you, and I'm excited that we're passing these items forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Upon further conversation, I believe, instead of taking items one through four back to committee, then I'll just be having conversations offline about the program rather than the specific land sales. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clark, then I will take this back as items one through 10, as previously moved by the chair. I will just, I don't see anyone else in queue to make comments. I do want to briefly speak to item 10 as well, and thank Councilmember Goodman for her leadership on really accelerating this program in our city. I'm really excited about this for a lot of reasons, but one is because I think it gives us a tool to support our local landlords. So when we started to look at our renter protection policies that we're contemplating, Regulatory Services provided us with their best estimate of who owns rental property in the city. And so there's a lot of our units, 80% of our units are owned by larger holdings, 14% of all landlords own 80% of rental units in the city. And there's this sort of small number of landlords that own, you know, a couple of hundred units, but there are thousands of landlords in the city of Minneapolis that own between one and four units. And these are some of the hardest-to-preserve buildings. These are the affordable duplexes and triplexes that are sprinkled throughout the city, and the preservation buyers that we're working with to try to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing aren't really able to buy these properties because they're sprinkled all throughout, and sometimes we can try to bundle them. But I think there's a huge opportunity to create more preservation buyers by empowering local landlords who live in our communities, who already own a couple of rental properties, and who, through this program and potentially other supports, could become those partners to the city in buying and preserving these smaller affordable rental properties. So I also really hope that our Assessors Office is committed to being a partner in this work, as they have stated verbally to me. When we are assessing buildings based on building sale, that is contributing to rising rents in our city. And so if our Assessors Office, which has a lot of contact with building owners through their property tax assessments, let people know about this program, I think it gives us an opportunity to get the word out more and preserve more of these critically needed affordable units. See if there's any other discussion on HPD items one through 10. Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, it brings forward four items for approval today. The first is the passage of an, of the Small and Underutilized Business Enterprise Program Ordinance, updating that with the procedures for administration and amending the sunset date of the program. And the second component of that is also directing the City Attorney's Office to analyze whether, whether the term minority within this particular ordinance is necessary, and then thinking about how we can use more asset-based language. The second is the passage of resolution establishing the South Side Green Zone Council. And the second component of that is directing the Office of Sustainability to issue and request for applications for $75,000. The number three is the passage of the resolution restructuring the Minneapolis Community Environmental Advisory Commission. And number four is authorizing a name change of the Calhoun Area Residence Action Group to neighbors, neighborhood to the South Uptown Neighborhood. I move approval of these items, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Cunningham has moved the P E C E report. Is there any discussion? I'll just note very briefly that I want to offer my thanks and the leadership to the folks who led the formerly Carragge Neighborhood through their name change, and it was a small but important way for them to voice support for us removing some really painful pieces of our history. And so the South Uptown Neighborhood is their new name, and I think it's really, really reflective of the way that that neighborhood organization strives to be inclusive of all voices and supportive of all of our neighbors in the city. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye. And abstention on item number two.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes in the report, except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one abstention.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have a report of the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. And today, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee is bringing forward eight items for consideration by the full council. Item number one is an agreement between the Minneapolis Fire Department and Big Fish Entertainment to record Minneapolis Fire Department personnel for a television series titled "The First Responders Live." Item number two is a training reimbursement for the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education for the approved training. Item number three is a donation of repurposed heavy-duty tactical shelters for use in tactical operations. Number four is a donation for travel and lodging expenses for the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services Symposium. Item number five is another donation for travel and lodging expenses for the Special Olympics of Minnesota Law Enforcement Torch Run Planning. Item number six is a 9-on-1 director survey and staff direction. Number seven is a contract with Infinity Wireless for two-way radio airtime trunking services. And item eight is a contract amendment with the Hennepin County regarding the Hennepin County Jail and a resolution. And I bring those items forward.
Councilmember Conno has moved the committee's report. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, something that was discussed at Public Safety at length this cycle, but, but isn't here because it was simply received and filed, was our third-quarter report, and it was quite a fulsome report on our body camera program metrics. And that is such a big change from where we were last year. This report gets more and more detailed, and officers have had more time to get used to the body-worn cameras as a routine part of their work. So whilst the percentage of compliance at this point in time from the third-quarter report shows 83% use, it is a marked improvement from where we were last year at this time, although not last quarter. I also thought it was interesting, because it's important that we're getting better at seeing where the remaining barriers are to usage. We're at that higher level of refinement in our program, and that's exciting. I know that our next step from Commander Granger is that we'll be focusing on low performers, and that low performer threshold will be 70% of compliance with policy or below, which is far higher than what we knew just one year ago was the average rate for all, for all of these devices. So I just wanted to say how committed we are, and we remain as a city council, to furthering the efforts of improved body camera policies and improving the compliance around those policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the Public Safety report? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards six items today. Item one is the sanitary sewer service availability charges. Item two is the contract amendment with Safety Signs LLC for traffic control devices. Item three is a temporary easement agreement with the Cedar Avenue South Reconstruction Project. Item four is the uniform assessment rates, establishing the 2019 rates. Item five is a bid for Leamington Ramp and Hoff Ramp Lighting retrofit project. And item six is a bid for hauling and disposal of dirt, snow, and asphalt, asphalt millings. Madam President, I forward all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the TPW report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards six items today. Item one is the sanitary sewer service availability charges. Item two is the contract amendment with Safety Signs LLC for traffic control devices. Item three is a temporary easement agreement with the Cedar Avenue South Reconstruction Project. Item four is the uniform assessment rates, establishing the 2019 rates. Item five is a bid for Leamington Ramp and Hoff Ramp Lighting retrofit project. And item six is a bid for hauling and disposal of dirt, snow, and asphalt, asphalt millings. Madam President, I forward all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the TPW report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has 21 items for the council's approval today. Items number one, two, and three are legal settlements. Item number four is a navigation center development. Item number five is a contract amendment with Haggen Christiansen Architects for the Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project. Item number six is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Tarozzo Replacement. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Premier Electrical Corporation for contract closeout of the portico and exterior replacement project. Item number eight is a contract with Wheeling Events Staff Services for event-based and builder security. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Security Task USA for security services as operated by various city departments. Item number 10 is a contract with Little Dog Inc., or the UPS Store for the Business Center lease at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number 11 is a contract for citywide temporary staffing services. Item number 12 is a contract for resiliency in communities after stress and trauma program. Item number three is a grant from Pioneer and Soldiers Cemetery Restoration Project. Item number 14 is 2018 third-quarter donations. Item number 15 is a contract amendment with Pi Consulting and Engineering for additional building enclosure commissioning services for the public service building. Item number 16 is a bid for new public service building steel tax-exempt materials purchased. Item number 17 is a contract amendment with Carlton Companies, Inc., for additional costs associated with demolition of existing 501 Fourth Avenue South structure for the public service building project. Item number 18 is a contract with Professional Services Industries, Inc., for construction, testing, and inspection services for the public service building project. Item number 19 is a contract amendment with Kevitt Companies for additional costs associated with amended construction schedule for the public service building. Item number 20 is a contract amendment with M.A. Mortensen for additional construction manager as an advisor services for the public service building project. And the final item is bids for concrete, steel installation, and waterproofing for the new public service building, and I move approval of all the items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to comment on item number 16, just wanted to make my colleagues aware in committee, when we asked the question to staff how Trump's tariffs on steel have affected this material purchase, they estimated throughout the cost of our new office building, it has increased the cost to taxpayers of approximately two, by approximately $2 million. And we are not the only ones suffering as a result of this poorly thought-out policy and trade war happening at the, as a result of the Trump administration. Now, I've talked with the Park Commissioner as well, who's expressed that they're actually scaling back their plans as a result of these increased prices. So I did want to bring this attention, bring attention to this by my colleagues, because it's really disappointing that this is directly taking away from plans in our city, that it is costing our taxpayers more money, and frankly, that across this nation, it's increasing costs to the public by billions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
I just wanted to quickly echo that, that note, and also point out that is a Minneapolis company that happens to be in my work, and having worked with them, they want to be here in the city. And these tariffs don't just cut down on the, the work that happens, but the, the jobs and everything else that come from it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the Ways and Means Report? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next order of business is the reports from special committees. We have a report today from the Executive Committee for proposed actions to the council, and I'll recognize Council Vice President Jenkins for that.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee bring forth two items today. One is the appointed position in Public Works, the Deputy Director of Public Works Business Administration. Item number two is the collective bargaining agreement with Construction Equipment Operators Unit. I move both these items for referral to the Ways and Means Committee.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
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 Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted, and that brings us to the announcements, and I'll see if there are any announcements from councilmembers. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to announce a statement that was developed by myself, Councilmember Cunningham, and School Board Member Jacqueline Ryan in South Bridge, Massachusetts. And it's a statement in support of the transgender community in response to the HHS and our current administration's proposal to erase transgender identity from all language and support from the federal government. And so the statement reads, "We write to you as three trans-elected leaders who are being told by the President of the United States that we don't exist. This is personal for us. It's enraging beyond words, and we need your support to fight back. Last week, we learned that the Trump administration is trying to erase the very existence of transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary people. They are attempting to redefine gender as unchangeable at birth based solely on perceived sexual anatomy, genetic testing, and original gender markers on birth certificates. This is an attack on our communities. It is grossly incorrect science, and it is a part of a broader campaign to further roll back the progress that was made in recent years under the Obama administration. While it is not immediately clear what the impact of this proposal will have, the potential consequences are staggering. Although there is no one place that sex is currently defined, the Department of Health and Human Services memo seeks to use one restrictive definition of gender, which will likely have an impact on transgender people's ability to keep themselves safe while accessing federally-funded programs and institutions that include sex segregation and other forms of sex and gender recognition. Transgender people already experience rampant discrimination through the healthcare system. As a result, a transgender person could experience discrimination and be refused from medical treatment. It could also impact trans people's ability to get needed gender-affirming medical treatments covered by insurance. Doctors have expressed serious concerns about this proposal's implications for the future of trans medical care.